To order.
Dr. Cortlande?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Dr. Mordred?
Here.
Mr. Morell?
Here.
Ms. Novy? Mr. Oberon?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Tamzinamir?
Here.
And Grace Hart?
Here.
For the President.
Hey, thank you. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. Please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. And according to the provisions of the Act of the Montpelot Township Education approved this meeting date, none of the meetings in place of the Montpelot Municipal Building, Montpelot Public Schools, Montpelot Public Laboratory, Montpelot Township Education, Ministry of Office Building, Montpelot Public School website can advertise together.
Good evening, high school student representatives. You have a report for us tonight?
Yes. In athletics, in tennis, the girls are preparing for their senior match tomorrow and their last match will be next Monday. Their record is currently nine and five, and they hope to improve to eleven and five by next week. Also, the first doubles team of Paige Gadau and Emma Verancine qualified and competed in the state tournament. The field hockey team has continued to improve their record to twelve, two, and one and is working towards our entrance in the state tournament. The girls soccer team stands with nine wins and nine losses. This year's team hopes to beat the standing record for any Montpelot girls soccer team of twelve wins. They would do this by the end of this season. Next Thursday is senior night for the girls soccer team, where underclassmen have an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments and also support their senior counterparts. The boys soccer team has won five of their past seven games, including a one-to-zero victory over Moorestown, the defending state champions. Today, the cross country team raced in the conference championship. Anna George of the girls team placed third overall, and Jen Kay Meyer of the boys team placed fourth overall. Both the girls and boys teams will race next Tuesday in the county championship.
As for clubs, the MTHS marching band won first place out of four bands of its group's size, winning the caption award for best overall this past weekend at Vernon Township High School. Additionally, the marching band won best overall bands, topping out eleven other bands in all group sizes with its class. Congratulations to the physics team, who competed at Rockus this weekend, and oral interpretation, James Burnett quarterfinals, and original oratory, Anjali Shah quarterfinals, Arushi Lutha semifinals, Natasha Dushaj placed fifth, and Congress Pranav Kumar placed sixth, and in extent, Chris Meyer placed third. As for school, this past weekend, we had our annual homecoming dance. We tried to get a bigger turnout, so we included catered food from Columbia Inn, Tiffany's Bone Fish, Montpelot Bagels, Montpelot Diner, 7-Eleven, and the Bridgedale Diner. We also had a photo booth and new lights. We had one of our biggest turnouts of 400 students, and the students voted for a homecoming king and queen from each grade, and the winners were presented and escorted by their parents at the homecoming game on Saturday.
And who might those winners be?
For freshmen, it was Nick Caleb and Marissa Amashurva.
Nick Caleb, Alex Caleb.
Oh, yes, Alex Caleb, I'm sorry. Sophomores, it was John Blake, I'm sorry, I don't know the names, but...
And was your name in the mix at all?
Yes, it was.
Really? Congratulations.
Yeah, it was me and Nick Caleb. Thank you.
Good for you. Anything else? Great, thank you. Any questions on board? Superintendent's report.
Okay, just a few quick things. I did want to indicate that I was invited and very delighted to participate in the Exercise U.S. program at Valley View School last month, part of a nationwide program that Len Saunders has put together, and it was just a wonderfully uplifting experience to spend twenty minutes exercising with the kids very early in the morning over at Valley View. So, wonderful program. Yesterday, through the work of Andrea Wallace, we had the ability for students to experience the Blue Expeditions Pilot Program using devices. They are able to participate in a virtual field trip experience that really takes them, you feel that you're at location, and they use the Colosseum for one of those experiences as, you know, students are looking up and they can, you know, they look up and they see the upper regions of the Colosseum. Just a wonderful virtual reality experience, and we thank Andrea for actually putting us in for consideration for that. It was really wonderful. The YGA Climate and Culture Survey update. We had our parent meeting last Thursday at high school, and I just want to make sure that parents are aware. We have, originally, we were talking about surveying staff and students at this point and surveying parents on a later date. We have decided to incorporate the parent survey into this year. We will be doing the students and staff first, and then the parent survey, which will be done through survey monthly, will happen a little bit later, but we will have all of those results available to the school teams that will be reviewing that data as they go about formulating their action plans. And an update on the One Montpelot Initiative. Through the assistance of Mr. Sanford, I was able to meet with a group of high school students last week to get their input, and we have scheduled a meeting of the One Montpelot group for November 4th. We're meeting with folks and reviewing and discussing the student input and starting to formulate some ideas and action plans in terms of how we will go about supporting and cultivating a culture of acceptance and collaboration within the Montpelot Township community. And, thank you. As far as the One Montpelot, we're going to need one or two board members to serve. The first meeting is scheduled for, as Dr. Rotar said, November 4th at 10 o'clock in the morning. I'll put an email out, and if you just respond back to me, and I'll let...
Is it working there?
It is, it's a long stay. We're dealing with a lot of parents, and they find it most convenient to be able to meet during the day when their students and their children are otherwise occupied. So, we may have some other meetings at other times, but at least this initial meeting is going to be held in the morning. Teachers will be able to get time off to attend? Yes. So, ahore ania, and just let me know if you can make it. I think once you commit to it, you're on it. So, I'll hold for your emails. So, we have a presentation this evening. I'm going to invite Dr. Schwartz to come up. We are delighted to have the opportunity for the board to hear about the Science Research Project at Sun High School.
So, hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. But actually, I am going to turn it over to people who do the most with the project. So, this time, we'll turn it over to the students, unless Ms. Salazar or Dr. Brickman have anything to say. But I think you'll be amazed, if the students have to say, other than what I have to say.
Would you like to use the mic, or would you like us to bring the mic to you?
I think I can speak out enough. Do you only see the mic?
Yes.
All right. So, does it work?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the new school intended, Dr. Rotar, for being here with us tonight, also for being in support of the science research program. So, first, let me introduce myself. My name is Alan Lott. I'm a sophomore in the science research program at Montpelot Township High School. As of now, I've been narrowing down the topics for the science research. And the science research program is very unique in the sense that it allows students to research specific areas in science which they have interest in. They just have flexibility, you know, a desire to pursue certain areas in science. So, tonight, we're going to have different presentations presented by some of the students in the science research program, and what they have done during the summer. So, first of all, we're going to do presentations, and I hope you have a good evening. But first of all, we have Abby and Gabriel.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Murphy. I am a sophomore in the science research program.
Hi, I'm Abby Hamlin. I'm also a sophomore in the science research program.
This program is intended to assist students in pursuing their future studies in the future.
This program runs over the course of three years, and students apply as freshmen, and only a certain number of students are selected. So, those who are accepted are very excited that they're going to serve.
So, because this is a three-year program, sophomores like Abby and myself, the media, the KCA, from the juniors and seniors, they lead the program for two or three years, and it's very interesting.
Also, to gain experience, students strive to find a mentor by the summer before the end of the year.
With the help of these mentors, we're hoping to get into a lot of careers and sorts, or even pursue our own.
The ultimate goal of the program is to write a research paper and be able to present at the symposium at the end of the year. This year's symposium day is June 8th, and it's at 6:30 at Montpelot High School. Everyone is welcome to attend if they would like.
One junior and one senior who's having sex, they are already choosing a topic, and some of the sophomores have asked that. Abby is doing those kind of exercises for research, and she's doing probably nine, five, or six, six. She will show them, please, the research. Sorry, about various research, and it's the end. Abby is doing some math.
What kind of math are you supposed to do? What kind of math?
So, I thought I'd give you a couple.
Thank you.
As he said, I give the upperclassmen a hash and a piece of homework this summer, and this evening, we have a couple to show you their brains.
All right, that's the question of your question, Shrinoff, a junior, doing the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you'd like to view the presentation better, you can come sit down.
We, yeah, we're good. Thank you.
So, hi, my name is Shrinoff. I'm currently a junior in the science research program, and I'll be presenting the research I did over the summer at Wind Lab. It's a computer science lab at Rutgers. So, the project I did was called Citizen B2B. What that was is that it's an application for smartphones to help assist drivers in dangerous driving situations on roadways. For example, this could include someone who ingests some sort of foreign material and are visually impaired, or someone who's speeding. So, what we did is that we used a Wi-Fi adapter. This is automatically embedded in all smartphones to communicate via Wi-Fi, and we use that for communication. What it did is that we use periodic broadcast and promiscuous reception. So, what periodic broadcast is, is that, for example, every two seconds, all of your phones would be sending out some sort of data. And promiscuous reception is that, at any given point, all of your phones would be constantly receiving data from everybody else's phone within range. And for this sort of communication, we use Linux boxes or orbit nodes, which are kind of like boxes that are Wi-Fi hotspots to implement this wireless communication. And the picture is just an example of the start screen of the app. So, at first, we'd start with the basic enhanced safety mode, which is just the starting mode of the app. One of two paths it could take is that it could connect to the OBD-2 diagnostic system, which is the onboard diagnostic system located under the dashboard of the car, and it would communicate with that through Bluetooth. It could then obtain the position ID or the PID of the vehicle to obtain its speed. The other path it could take is that it could calculate the speed of the car itself using GPS coordinates, and then finally, it would broadcast that information to all vehicles in range. So, then, any other phone nearby would then receive this data and then compare it to some sort of threshold. Let's say the speed limit was 50 miles per hour, and someone nearby was driving 80. That person's phone would then transmit data that they are driving 80 miles per hour to anyone nearby. The person nearby would receive that data. That 80 mile per hour speed would be compared to the 50 mile per hour threshold, and since it is greater, the phone would send down a warning message to nearby drivers of a warning of incoming high-speed vehicle. If the person was driving 40 miles per hour, they'd be under the threshold, and instead of sending out a warning message, the whole process would cycle through again. So, for our results, we used two iPhones, the 5 and 5C models, and we found that the range of reception was approximately 100 feet, varying for each iPhone. We were unable to use the Android because to get, we needed root permissions from Android itself to be able to access features we needed. And we found that our tests weren't really conclusive because we were testing one driver communicating one stationary orbit box. On the roadway, it's multiple drivers constantly in motion communicating with each other. So, in that case, our tests weren't inconclusive. We do have pictures, though, of the phone screen of the app calculating the driver's speed and position using GPS coordinates. And then the third picture shows a location, like a notification of someone driving nearby. I did work on another project over the summer called Mario Kart, and the goal of this project was to design a virtual reality version of Mario Kart on a 3D headset for a human driver on a real-time go-kart on a test track. So, as the picture shows, that's the go-kart we used, the Crazy Car XL. We also used the PC, the Oculus Rift 3D headset, a Google Project Tangle tablet to position the car inside the testing track, as well as an Arduino Uno platform for safety procedures, and ultrasonic and laser sound sensors for safety and for positioning the car. And this is a video of the results. So, the majority of the screen shows what the driver sees on the headset using the Oculus Rift, while in the top right corner is a video of the real-life driver on the test track. I'd like to thank my mentor at the lab, Dr. Ivan Seskar. I'd also like to thank the people from the Citizen B2B and the Mario Kart project for allowing me to work with them on this great opportunity. And of course, I'd like to thank Dr. Brickman, Ms. Salazar, and my parents for guiding me through this process.
What would be a real-world application using the information from the Mario Kart?
That's a good question. He asked, what would be a real-world application of the Mario Kart project? So, using that headset, we could implement it for teaching people how to drive. So, student drivers aren't the safest drivers on the road. So, what we could do is that giving them, putting them on a closed course and allowing them to, and simulating a real-life driving experience, we could teach them how to drive better without the risk of them hurting somebody else. Any other questions?
I have a question. What do you think about the philosophical issues of privacy with your first project?
He asked, what are any issues of privacy with the first project? There are a lot of issues of privacy. We haven't really gotten into that. We didn't get into that yet because normally, any, what would be a concern when this came up is that maybe this data, if I was speaking, could be transmitted to the police. Except, the problem is, if you're, if the police are nearby anyway, they'll most likely catch you in that range. But we haven't really gotten to the point where we were able to build an app, like a complete app for all sorts of scenarios, since our tests are from one motionary, motion, one object in motion with one stationary object. While we need to be, everything is in motion constantly, it's still not a completely developed app. So, we haven't really considered the idea, the problems.
Well, sometimes, it's a good idea to consider those issues upfront before you spend a lot of time and effort, you know, pursuing a project or a app, just in general.
I have a question. Let the lawyer sort out that part. From your, talking about the first project, you gave reasons why it was inconclusive and so on. From your own opinion, do you think that down the road, the technological aspects of that will be overcome? And it will be, it will in fact take place, that you'll be able to warn drivers of drivers driving too fast, too slow, whatever. Is it, is it the technical aspects? What do you think? Will it be done at some point?
I think it can be done. It was just that we didn't have enough time to completely finish this aspect to, like, for the communication from multiple motion, objects in motion. We just didn't have enough time to get to that testing in the lab. But I think, given a few years, if we return and keep working on it, we can overcome the technological aspects.
It is fascinating. Both things are fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to introduce our senior to present. Oh, sorry, one more question.
It's not really questions and comment. I appreciate your enthusiasm and science. I think it's wonderful. You also are a very good speaker. I just want to let you know that that's another aspect that you can pursue, too.
I'd like to introduce our senior to present his research. I'd like to welcome Shah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shah, and I'm going to be presenting my research that I did over the summer at Drew University. It was on testing the effects of methylene blue on stabilizing tau protein. So, my initial research began in sophomore year when I started researching Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's disease is the fifth-leading cause of death in the world and is the most common form of dementia, so it's clearly an issue that we want to solve. I began looking at the two, the two causes of Alzheimer's disease, neurotic plaques and neurofibular retangles, or what we call tau protein tangles. So, neurotic plaques are caused by amyloid beta proteins which clump up together and deposit themselves on neurons. This disables the neuron from being able to function and signal other neurons. Neurofibular tangles are caused by tau proteins that tangle together in microtubules. So, how it works is that you have an axon right here and dendrite right here, and this is still part of the neuron. The axon is involved with sending out signals to other neurons, and the dendrite is involved with receiving those signals. So, on the axon, you have what we call a microtubule. And this microtubule is basically just a long strand of smaller units of proteins that are helping the, helping the axon send out the signal to other neurons. And on these microtubules, you have stabilizing tau proteins. These tau proteins are involved with making sure that the microtubules stay together and the signal is put out to other neurons. However, in Alzheimer's disease, what ends up happening is that the stabilizing tau proteins come off the microtubules and clump together and tangle. This causes the proteins in the microtubules to fall apart. This obviously causes the axon to be disabled and not be able to function as well. So, over the summer, I completed many different dissections and plating methods. So, first, we dissected out the brains of the mice and associated it in tripsin, a solution that acts as a protease, which basically cleans out any extracellular material. Then, then the cells were plated to grow, and then after an hour, the methylene blue dye was added. Methylene blue is basically just a stain. It's often used in immunohistochemistry procedures, and basically, what happened was that in previous experiments, we found that methylene blue had this odd effect that it was able to stabilize tau proteins. So, we wanted to look more into that. So, the objective of our project was to view the effects of methylene blue on tau proteins. Methylene blue was a, what we did was we added the methylene blue onto the neurons and viewed its effects under a black light. So, here I have a picture of the neurons that we collected. What ended up happening was that we didn't have any conclusive data that linked to anything. What ended up happening was that some of the axons stayed together using the methylene blue. The tau proteins stabilized the microtubules, and the axons were working perfectly. However, sometimes, the axon was not working perfectly. It became, it disintegrated after the tau proteins tangled up. So, therefore, none of the, none of the data that we collected was really conclusive. However, a future, a future research aspect that we wanted to look at was on contamination issues. During our project, we reached many points in our, many points where contamination became a problem, where we've played something, played a bunch of cells, and then after an hour, the cells became contaminated with bacteria. So, further in the future, we want to look into lessening this contamination issue. I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Roger Knowles at Drew University. He was my mentor over the summer. Two of the undergraduate students who were also on this project at Drew, Dr. Brickman and Ms. Salazar for their help over the years, and of course, my parents. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. Earlier, you were talking about the axons getting destabilized and the tau proteins falling off. How new is that research?
So, she asked how recent the research was on the tau proteins, and this research is relatively new. It was in the past couple of years. It's, it's, the methylene blues used on tau proteins, on stabilizing tau proteins, that's extremely new. That happened within the past two years. Yeah.
So, methylene blue is, is there a hope in the future that methylene blue could actually slow the process? Because methylene blue ingested is poisonous.
Yes. So, what this research, what we're hoping to do with this research is that we're just trying to find out whether methylene blue can actually, actually stabilize the tau all the time. So, then afterwards, we'll be looking into drug processes, how to get methylene blue into the body without killing someone.
And as far as you know, is investigation of the tau proteins, the, or the stabilizing of the tau proteins, the only avenue of research?
No, there is the other avenue of research with the neurotic plaques. That's the other way, that's the other method that causes Alzheimer's disease in people. So, what ends up happening is that there are long strands of ATP molecules, or amyloid precursor molecules, and when enzymes in the brain aren't able to cut that molecule correctly, there leaves long strands of these ATP molecules. These long strands clump together and deposit themselves on the neurons. That obviously disrupts function.
Thank you.
All right. Once again, I'd like to thank the board that helped me present tonight. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for that wonderful presentation. And I did attend, one of my first, very first events here in Montpelot was to attend last year's science symposium. And to me, it is just phenomenal to see the depth and breadth that you all acquire of your subject area. I mean, you know this, you're able to convert... I mean, you, you know this. You're able to converse in it at a very high level. And I think that's a testament to the program. And it really is a wonderful experience. And we're very happy that you were able to come and enlighten us in terms of some of the projects that you're currently engaged in.
I, you know, the board enthusiastically supports this program because the work that you're doing is, it's just amazing. Your knowledge, your poise, your ability to just talk about the subject matter with such ease. The depth of your knowledge is just incredible. And it's a goosebump moment every time we have an opportunity to hear you guys come up and talk to us and talk about your research. So, thank you for coming out tonight. And thank Miss Alzar and Dr. Brinkman and Sandy Schwartz for continuing to just inspire these kids. And thank my fellow board members for continuing to enthusiastically support it. I think Suma Renello is itching to get a picture of, do you want everyone? Okay. So guys, I'll recess for two minutes and you guys can come up and get your picture taken.
Business administration report?
No.
Any committee reports? I know we have a science committee report that's coming next week, next meeting. Renovations tomorrow? Delegate liaisons, New Jersey School Boards is conducting their workshop next week. Some of us will be attending. And there's also the delegate assembly on November 21st. Morris County School Boards is holding a meeting on November 18th. The topic will be HIP, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. They're holding a keynote presentation. Where are we and is it helpful? And at the Morris County School Boards meeting, at the end of the agenda, we have a section called Good News and Sharing. And so, different school districts around Morris County will present some of the interesting work that they're doing in their schools. And actually, the original science research students presented last year, I think. Or was it last year? And the audience of the school board members primarily, some superintendents. Yes, that's right. Couldn't stop asking questions. They were just so impressed. And as many of you know, an offshoot of the original science research program is the humanities research program. And why I'm saying all this is because the Good News and Sharing agenda item for the upcoming Morris County School Board Association on November 18th will feature our very own humanities research program. So I'm very, very excited about that. I thank the staff and students involved for taking time out of their busy evening to come and share what the program is about with the school board members in Morris County.
Karen, I just want to clarify the meeting time for that.
It's dinner served from 6:00 to 6:45, and the program begins at 6:45.
If I might have checked, I, I've said this before. I find those workshops and presentations at the county board meetings, in case anyone happens to be there, highly, okay? And I feel way more, I'm looking forward to the HIV. Okay, so to me, it's going to be personally very helpful, I just mean, with human reports and so on. I think they're excellent.
Excellent. Anything from Morris County Educational Services Commission? Jack? Mustang Association?
Well, I sent you a written summary, but I did want to just reiterate one thing. I was in the summary. And that was that at the Mustang meeting, there were two individuals there from Inception Athletic Excellence. Subcontractor or whatever they call them, they're working in the building now. And the, a lot of questions, on a give and take, with their presentation. And the leadership of the Mustangs did ask me to convey to you, I did in my report, but just wanted to say the enthusiasm, that apparently it was in the room, the parents regarding this program and the anticipation of this program. I spoke briefly with Dr. Shider afterwards. And I think it's going to be a great asset to the school. And I think the parents will be, are looking forward to that aspect of it as well.
And just for the benefit of the public, what will they be doing with the students?
Well, it's with the Weight Strength and Conditioning Program, okay? And they're, they're a main facility. It's in Madison, I believe, right? And I'm sure you could hear more details from, or illustrators. But they're looking booking students and, you know, the Strength and Conditioning Program. And there's a lot, a lot to offer to the students, you know, in-season, off-season, you know, throughout the year. I think it's going to be a very, an asset to our young athletes.
Thanks for sharing that, Mark. Are there any PTC liaison reports?
Okay, so the Hilldale PTC has been very active, as always. We've got a number of fundraising activities coming up, including a tricky trade in March, which they've already secured about $26,000 in donations or commitments for donations. So, it's going to be a very nice tricky trade. People like tricky trades. They've got, we've got Halloween movie night coming up on October 30th. It's pajama party, 7:00 PM, Monsters, Inc., for the kids. Should be a lot of fun. Also, one thing that maybe a lot of people don't realize is that amazon.com has a smiles program. Now, Hilldale has signed up for this. And what you do is when you go to amazon.com, and I think Target may have one, some of these other retailers have these programs, where there's a way to donate a portion of the sales to the school. So, for instance, if you go through the link that PTC from Hilldale sends to all the parents, you can go to amazon.com, or you can go to Amazon and click on their smiles program, and you can scroll down the list of charities and nonprofits such as schools. And when you select that school, a portion of your purchase then is returned back to the school. I forget how much this is, but it can, I mean, when you consider how much online purchasing is being done nowadays, this can quickly add up to a lot of money for the school. So, I don't know if the other schools are participating in the smiles program. Hilldale is. If you can't find your school, then you consider Hilldale for maybe the school, or should set up a fund for themselves.
I'm wondering if there's any out to the parents, more? Because I mean, I just saw in the news yesterday, it ends up in the bigger Walmart. They would be, so if we could, you know, spread the information somehow.
Maybe tell the PTC presidents, you know, report back to them, or send an email out to them.
Some of that, some of that information is included on the landing demos that go around from each school.
Yeah, I don't know how, I only get one from Hilldale, so I don't know if any of the other schools are doing it. But again, you know, this could, you know, since we send back several hundred dollars, a few thousand dollars a year back to the schools.
And even maybe on the website, maybe something that you mentioned, if that's appropriate.
Thank you, David. In the, uh, center negotiations, Charlie's not here tonight, but I'll just mention very, very briefly that we had our first meeting with the MTEA last night. It was a very positive meeting. Are there any other additional reports?
Actually, yeah. Actually, negotiations. I guess I'm telling my committee something new right now. A short time ago, we discussed setting up some permits, dates with the supervisors. And I sent an email to David Telsby that proposed date. And David actually just wrote me back and said that 7:00 PM on October 27th is fine for our initial meeting. So we'll be meeting with the supervisors on, I'm sorry, October 27th at 7:00 PM, at the board office, correct? At the board office?
Uh, not the arranged access, because I know, I'll be in Atlantic City that night. I won't want to be able to attend, so I'll try to.
Should I ask David another location, we met at a high school or something, maybe?
Oh, yeah. We met expressly initially in some parts of Hilldale. We met at that particular school, actually.
Okay. Yeah, maybe I'll propose to David to meet somewhere at the high school.
If not, let me know when I'll arrange.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, a clarification question, not particularly on that. The MTEA contract, which I guess this should be for visits in the street, which was approved by the mayor and the mayor. So, the salaries for the teaching staff have kicked in now?
Yes.
They've been along?
Retro checks went on, pulling out this lot. I did pay for first, just to pay.
Okay, so they, okay. So just the public, they're all paying, they're just?
Yes, they are. Okay, sir.
All right. Thank you.
And David, before we close this section of the meeting, I just wanted to add that the Morris County School Boards meeting on HIP, if there are any parents, parent leaders who want to attend, let me know. And it's an update on HIP, what constitutes an actual HIP incident, because, you know, maybe not everyone understands what it means. And so, if you're interested, just let me know, and we can make arrangements for you to attend. Okay, uh, there are additional reports. I'll open it up to the public. Are there any on the agenda? Okay, seen them. Close public participation. And then came a motion for items J through O, including a resolution, which will be read by our board attorney. David, second?
Second.
Thank you.
Whereas on October 20, 2015, a funner hearing was held for the Monmouth Township Board of Education pursuant to NJSA 18838-1 and NJAC 6822-1.1. And whereas on that date, the parents did attend the hearing and presented testimony on their behalf. And whereas the board, after having heard and considered all of the proofs and testimony presented, determined that the required proof of residency in the Monmouth Township School District was not provided pursuant to NJAC 6822-3.4 and NJAC 6822-4.3A. Now, therefore, the board hereby adopts the following resolution. Be it resolved on this 20th day of October, 2015, the board finds that student number 70251 has not provided the required proof of residency in the Monmouth Township School District, and therefore is ineligible to attend the Monmouth Township Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the superintendent is hereby directed to effectuate the transfer of the child forthwith, subject to the provisions of NJSA 18838-1B2, and that written notice of this decision and the family's right to contest saying before the Commissioner of Education within 21 days shall be immediately served upon the parents. And be it further resolved that the board hereby reserves its right to collect any and all tuition owed by the student's parents for the student's period of eligibility to attend school and district.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Bullock. Are there any questions on J? I'll just add a comment that we are very proud about our CUSAC statement of assurance in district performance review submission. That's a great score. So I would thank all staff, administrators, and our central office team. Thank you. Any other questions on J? K? L? M? Just a reminder, board members attending workshop abstain on M1 and whatever your number is. N? O? Resolution? Go, Paul, please.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Abstain on M14. Yes, I'll address.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain on K4N and check A0618. Yes to all. K4N. Some Frank as a net. Sorry. I just get fit, so I'm just going to.
Mr. Morales?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
I am delighted.
Dr. King?
Abstain on M13. Yes to everything else.
Dr. Corley?
Abstain on K1, check number 80585, and M1, number 1. Yes to everything else.
Motion to adjourn.
Any other business, general board comments? I'll open it up to the public. Right items not on the agenda. Do you want to talk back? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.